We'll call the Tuesday, January 24th meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda?
Yes Chairman, we were going to try and move the swearing in of reappointed Planning Commissioner, Ms. Pruitt, to, I guess we could do the prior to public comments if that would work after roll call.
Okay, does, we have consensus for that?
Sure.
Okay, we will. Okay, moving right along, roll call please.
Chairman Saylor.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Helmar.
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt.
Here.
Commissioner Stop and Bring.
Here.
Okay, moving right along to the swearing in. Congratulations, moving right along to public comments. Under Government Code 54954.3, members of the audience may address the Commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during the Commission's consideration. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Oh, you did? Okay, yes.
If it's regarding the public hearing, you guys can, you can do public comment during the public hearing. Yeah.
Yes, there'll be a time, open time. Information and consent calendar, we have one item, approval of the minutes from the December 13th, 2020 meeting. There's no need for discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Homer made the motion to approve, does the motion have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pruitt made the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
One abstention, I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't? Okay, okay, that's right. Public hearings, one planning, one item, Planning Commission consideration of conditional use permit and variance in further adopting Resolution Number 023P-002 approving with conditions a 17-room hotel at 201 Washington Street.
Thank you Commissioner and Commissioners. Tonight, staff is providing a report regarding the consideration of Resolution 023P-002 for an application received for conditional use permit, site plan review and variance based on findings and subject to conditions of approval for a 17-room hotel to be located 201 Washington Street. On November 8th, Community Development Staff began processing an application for a conditional use permit, site plan and variance for the conversion of the existing structure at 201 Washington from an existing office use to a 17-room hotel. As described in more detail, City Staff has determined that the project, the proposed project is in conformance with the general plan, the zoning regulations, and all applicable plans adopted by the city. In terms of land use compliance, the current property is zoned mixed-use with the general plan land use designation of mixed-use. Hotel uses are permitted uses, however, subject to approval of a conditional use permit. Hotels and motels are defined as establishments offering lodging for transient patrons. These establishments may provide additional services such as conference and meeting rooms, restaurants, bars, or recreational facilities available to guests or to the general public. This classification includes motor lodges, motels, hostels, extended-stay hotels, and tourist courts, but does not include rooming houses, boarding houses, or private residential clubs. So in terms of a conditional use permit, in accordance with the Plan and Zoning Code and mixed-use zoning designations, hotel motels shall require the issuance of a conditional use permit. This use classification requires special consideration to ensure that they can be designed, located, and operated in a manner that will not interfere with the use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties. The process for review of conditional use permit applications is designed to evaluate possible adverse impacts and to minimize them where possible through the imposition of specific conditions. In accordance with Section 9-6.402 of the Municipal Code, it requires that all applicable new structures, permanent or temporarily erected, including significant remodels of structures in the city, require a site plan review and approval by the Planning Commission for consistency with all applicable zoning regulations. The purpose of this site plan review is to enable the Community Development Director or the Planning Commission to make findings that proposed development is in conformity with the intent and provisions of the Kalanga Municipal Code and to guide the building official in issuance of permits. One additional item is the issuance of, in the review of a variance. Variance is our intentence to provide a mechanism for relief from the strict application of this title where stripped application will deprive the property owner of privileges enjoyed by similar properties because of the subject properties' unique and special conditions. Variances may be granted with respect to dimensional and performance standards, but variances from the use regulations of this title are not allowed. The applicant is requesting a variance related to the transitional standards, which we'll describe further in the report. The application constitutes a project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Therefore, staff has prepared an environmental analysis as part of the land used application. And once the application was deemed complete, staff requested comments from the necessary city departments. This proposal, including conditions of approval, reflect feedback from the necessary city departments as well. So in terms of the information regarding the actual project, in terms of site plan review, is that the structure was previously approved for a private school and prior to that it was used as a dental office. The existing structure is currently 6,642 square feet with existing office spaces and various rooms. The applicant has proposed to convert the space into 17 hotel rooms. The existing footprint of the structure will not be modified. Access to the site will be made via the entrance on Washington to access the parking facilities on the northwest corner of the hotel and access via the alley off California Street to access the parking facilities on the south side and the eastern edge of the structure. The eastern parking area will be one-way from the alley heading north to Washington Street with right turn only out. In accordance with the comments provided by the city engineer, all driveways will be reconstructed to comply with current city standards. In terms of utilities, public utility facilities exist in the alley in California and are available to serve the development. Since this is an existing facility, utility connections are currently in place. However, the applicant, as part of their building permit application, would need to conform to the current water sewer and gas connections and ensure that they're sized appropriately to support the demand since this structure will be going from an office use to a hotel use. The applicant shall obtain an encroachment permit for any work within the right-of-way. The applicant will also need to provide a new hydrant location as identified on the city engineer's comments and confirmed by the fire department. In terms of parking, in accordance with Section 9-4302 of the Zoning Code, the parking requirement for a hotel is one space per each living unit or area and sleeping unit and one space for an onsite employee. So based on the proposed room count and the employee count, this site shall accommodate 21 parking spaces. The proposed site plan provides for 23 parking spaces, however, space 17 has been identified to be removed due to the maneuvering difficulty away from the building and into the alley right-of-way, and including also space 15 will need to be removed unless the column is removed to accommodate the additional parking area. With the removal of the two spaces, 21 spaces shall remain and the standard may be met. In addition, there is permitted on-street parking in both California and Washington, which will add to available spaces to accommodate this use. Terms of refuse containers, a trash enclosure has been provided to support the required trash and recycling receptacles. The applicant will be providing landscaping along street frontage and within the interior corridors where applicable. This will be a form of rehabilitating the existing planting areas with drought-tolerant landscaping consisting of ground cover, drought-tolerant plants and boulders. The building will be outfitted with adequate lighting so not to spill over into adjacent properties. The use of floodlighting will not be, will be prohibited. Packaged building lights shall be permitted and reviewed and approved by the Police Department and Building Department for compliance with the Plan and Zoning Code and Electrical Code. There is no signage as part of this application, so that would need to be a separate application if there's going to be particular signage. In terms of surrounding uses, to the south, there's residential separated by an alley. To the north, you have residential districts separated by a collector's street with a median. To the west is a mixed-use zoning, which is existing medium-density residential, and then to the east is also mixed-use land use designation, which is like a vacant office. So in terms of variance for the transitional standards, so in accordance with the Plan and Zoning Code, where a parcel and commercial district is adjacent to a residential district, a solid masonry wall no less than six feet, no more than seven feet in height shall be erected along such property line. If the district boundary is an alley, the wall shall be along the length of the commercial property line against the alley. No driveway openings into the alley are allowed. So in this case, the subject property is adjacent to a residential district to the south. Typically, in new development, the construction of the solid masonry wall will be required and acceptable. However, in this case, where there's an existing structure and parking facilities that are fully reliant on access from the alley, strict application of this regulation could potentially deprive the use of this property, indeed, the property unable to comply with the code. In this case, a variance would be appropriate based on the impacts of the strict application of the regulations. So there's multiple findings in terms of being able to make a determination on the variance based on staff's analysis and looking at the project-specific in terms of the use, that it would be able to meet those, meet that criteria based on the usability of the property if you were, if you're required to have to put the block wall up and restrict, you know, access off the alley where prior commercial uses have utilized that alley. In terms of environmental consideration, since the proposed use is not expanding the footprint of the existing building and it's a permitted use subject to a conditional use permit, the proposed project has been determined to be exempt from CEQA as existing facilities. And then a notice of exemption would be filed with the Fresno County Clerk's Office once approval has been granted for this application. And then on January 12th, public hearing notices for the project were posted and mailed to the property owners located within 300 feet of the project site. And as of this report, as of the report, we hadn't received any, but we have provided you public comment. We've received emails, phone calls regarding the project. So we provide you copies of all the emails we've received. And I do have a sticky note from another property owner that was, that called. Didn't have access to email, but I took down notes and then I'll provide that to the clerk for the record as well. So with that, basically when we look at these projects, we have to look at the findings. We have to look at it based on the application documents that are submitted and looking at what the intended use as a hotel use would be. And there's three findings, which is one, general plan consistency that the approval of the proposed project will advance the goals and objectives of, is in, is consistent with the policies of the general plan and other applicable plans the city has adopted. Neighborhood compatibility, the location size, design, bulk coverage, density, traffic generation, and operating characteristics of the proposed project are consistent with the purposes of the district. Where it is located will not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood and surrounding properties. And the nature of the use, the architectural design features of proposed development make it attractive, functional, and convenient. The proposed development enhances the successful operation of the surrounding area and its basic community function or provides an essential service to the community or region. So with that, those are the three findings the Commission must make in order to approve a conditional use permit. We have provided in the resolution, there are additional conditions that have been provided, that have been placed on the project. And as the Commission has a conversation, conditions can be added, deleted, whatever to the Commission's desire.
Thank you, thank you so much. Before the public hearing is open, do any Commissioners have any comment or questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Homer?
Do you know, Sean, how far from the high school this is located? I mean, I visualize it, just do you know in terms of feet or?
I don't, but I can quickly get that information for you.
One thing I noticed is we got, you know, we, the package that we got had the external configuration, but there wasn't any detail about how that building would be converted into 17 rooms. Do we have any information?
We don't have final floor plans, there were some floor plans provided, but we typically don't always provide floor plans. But they, it's still going to have to go through the permitting process for a building to ensure that the rooms can be properly converted, sized appropriately, have the proper amenities to be able to provide that, those rooms.
Because looking at, you know, looking at the outside plan, I'm just kind of wondering how, you know, what kind of rooms we're talking about, whether we're talking about like, like Motel Six type of setup, whether we're talking about more like dormitory setup? Do you have any idea? I can't get a good picture for what it's going to look like.
From what I've seen is that they'll, they'll all have their own basically restroom, showers, and living space in each room. I think there's two rooms that actually would share a, like a restroom facility. And the applicant is here too, so if there are specific questions from the applicant, you would, you could ask them to.
Okay.
If you'd like to get some specifics on the operational characteristics, you can ask them to.
Yes, I would like that. Also, and maybe the question is, would also be for him, is the target and client base that we're, you know, that he's aiming at for, to use this motel?
Based on email I received from the applicant, it's essentially just, you know, folks that will be staying for a short period of time, no more than 30 days, based on what the requirement is.
Maybe this is better for the, for the applicant also, but I was wondering about the sustainability of the project. I know that a lot of effort was put into converting that to a school, which never really got off the ground. And my question was, you know, how likely, if approved, this would actually become operational?
Yeah, that would probably definitely be a question for the applicant.
Are you the applicant? Okay, if you could come up to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Luis Bravo, I'm a general contractor, I'm a building inspector for the state of California. I was hired by Mr. Rito for this project. And the idea of bringing this building to life, because it's been abandoned for years, they're getting homeless inside the building every week. So I think this is the time to bring this building alive and prevent it from getting burned, possibly. And the other point is bringing dormitory set up, like the lady said, for the teachers coming from Fresno. And his son was talking to one of the teachers. And he said, "It would be a good idea to have a dormitory set up for the teachers coming from Fresno, because sometimes they have events where they have to spend all day and they don't, they don't want to go back during the night. And they're happy to have a place to stay overnight. They're not going to sell beer, they're, it's going to be open from eight to eight and it's going to be only for dormitory. Every room is going to have their own restroom. And it's not going to be a Motel Six type, it's going to be a city hotel, a very decent place to stay for teachers and students. We, our idea is to make it basically for the school. We're looking at the school as a client for the project.
Commissioner Stop and Bring?
So Sean, looking at the application, conditional use, it states that the use classification requires special consideration to ensure that they can be designated, located, and operated in a manner that will not interfere with the use and enjoyment of surrounding properties. So my question to you is that has staff already determined that it will not interfere with the enjoyment of use of the surrounding properties based on the recommendations?
Well, based on the findings and based on the application, we don't expect that to occur.
And the findings were done by whom?
By staff.
Okay, so the staff has determined, based on the findings, that there will not be any interference with the surrounding properties, correct?
That's based on the recommendation, yes, so the Planning Commission could say contrary.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple questions. First of all, for you, you said that you're going, your primary clientele is expected to be teachers and students?
Yes.
Okay, have you, what research have you done that leads you to believe that there would be enough teacher and student population that would want to stay no more than 30 days in this hotel?
Well, Mr. Rito's son, he has done some research about it. And what we have discovered is that the teachers, he has a friend, one friend, he's a, my name is.
What is it? Yeah, you want to tell him about it?
Maybe he can answer this question.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Rita Wutierrez. One of the things that we would like to also go ahead and bring up, that is not just going to be for the schools, such as professors and students, it's also going to be used for a location where the nurses could come in, you know, such as, what are they called, certified registered nurses? Yes, they could come on in from other towns, so they could go ahead and have a location to go ahead and stay. There's not just the school that has the necessity for this type of, you know, business. It's multiple areas in our community. So yeah, if you guys have any more questions, what was your question? What type of, what makes us believe?
Yeah, kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Helmar's question about sustainability of the business and the contractor's comment that it was anticipated that a lot of teachers and students would be staying there. And now you're saying registered nurses. My question is, have you done any research into contacting teachers that travel from Fresno, Visalia?
I have.
And whatnot, to, that would lead you to believe this hotel venture would be sustainable?
So one of the key elements that would go ahead and actually allow us to go ahead and open one of these type of businesses is the amount of schools that we actually have in Kalanga. We don't just have, you know, the elementary schools, we have the middle school, we have the faith Christian school, we also have the college. So it's not just like if we're trying to piggyback off of one single K through 12 school, it's actually multiple schools that, you know, need this type of essential business.
Thank you, I'm, I'm, I know you don't know me, but I spent 19 years in the Kalanga Huron School District, so I'm aware of the educational offerings in the community. And I'm also pretty aware of the amount of people who commute, but also have a family at home that's expecting them every night.
So you also should know that a lot of these teachers come into the Kalanga, you know, the city, just for a short period of time, such as five to seven days, just to have their work. have their work week pulled off, and then after the work week, they go into, you know, home mode. They go have fun with their kids, with their family, they enjoy that time, but whenever they're at work, that's, you know, where they're at, at work.
I understand that, thank you.
Of course.
And I have a, oh, go ahead.
Excuse me. Are, are you going to have, are you going to allow H two A program, H two A visas to stay at that motel?
Are you talking about contracted workers?
Yes, H two A visa holders.
Let's go ahead and talk to the owner about, of the business about this?
Okay, okay. My, my only concern, H two A visa holders, and, and I, I, that is an outstanding program, I work in agriculture, I think that is an outstanding program. H two A visa holders allow, allow people to legally come into, and?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry about that, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Sean.
Okay, thank you.
My question is regarding the alley access. You had mentioned that prior use, building it now would prevent the hotel from going, the wall, building the wall now would prevent the hotel from being able to use the alleyway for parking, and you stated that prior use, they've always used that. What are all of the prior uses of that building?
Prior uses would have been basically office type uses, so I think the dental office was, oh, sorry. I think the dental office was there prior, the school never opened, but the, the dental office was there, and I think there may have been, I think the attorney's office was there too.
So it's always been a consistent population that was there repeatedly, day after day, until it changed to a, you know, from the dentist to the school, or whatever it was. It wasn't changing daily, every couple of days, sort of thing.
Not quite sure what your...
Well, because we're talking about whether or not it's gonna impact the residents in the area, and if I'm a resident living behind this property, and I have children, and I have children down the street that are walking to the school, and it's an attorney there or a dentist there, I know that it's the attorney there or the dentist there, until it changes from one to the other. But if it's a hotel there, I don't know if it's, you know, hotel customer A one day, hotel customer B the next day, and constantly rotating, so you're increasing the exposure of risk within the residency.
That would be something the commission would need to consider, if that's something that you guys feel would be of, of concern.
Yeah, that, that I think would definitely change the environment that's there, from what has been there, and would increase the risk to the residents.
Just kinda cap on that. My thought too is that alley was being used as access from basically an eight to five commercial building. We are now gonna expose it twenty-four hours to usage, which I don't know, the city guidelines on that for alley usage on a commercial property twenty-four hours, would, is that something?
It's not necessarily something that you would deny based on, or, but it's something that you consider, and that's why hotels are identified as permitted, subject to a conditional use permit. So if the commission feels that conditions can be placed on it, then to not have that impact, then you can place those conditions. If you feel those conditions are not going to be, are gonna go far enough to be able to actually limit that impact, then you have to make appropriate findings for, you know, that this particular location isn't necessarily suitable for this type of use. And that's the purpose of the conditional use permit. So when we look at it from staff's perspective and reviewing applications, we look at it from the zoning criteria, the regulations that we have in terms of the way that we look at projects, and have to analyze projects based on policies, regulations that have been adopted by the council. And so when we look at those, there's nothing specific about whether it's twenty-four hours or whether it's nine to five, whether or not it's not suitable, right?
Okay, we will go ahead and open the public hearing for anybody that wants to speak for or against this item. I believe we'll let the lady go first. Oh, no, go ahead. You were standing, you've been standing, so. Please state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Honorable Planning Commission, my name's Rihanna Gonzalez, I'm here to represent Kalinka Huron Unified School District. In regards to this project, we're here to express our concern regarding this seventeen-room motel project just down from our school district and many of our schools, in regards to school safety and student safety. First, we don't support the project being approved, we have very specific concerns about school and student safety. We officially ask that you not approve the project. However, should the commission proceed, the district respectfully asks that you add strict conditions on the permit regarding these topics. Ensure that the hotel is maintained well, and does not provide any added dangers for students or parents passing by. Ensure that the occupants of the hotel do not loiter on school paths, such as to make students or parents passing by uncomfortable or feel unsafe. Ensure that any crosswalk, near ingress or egress areas of the hotel are well-marked and safe for students and parents to utilize. Ensure a provision of signage for hotel guests to watch for children crossing. Ensure that the hotel is used by persons that are there for short term, to not exceed thirty days. Ensure that the hotel does not exist to house criminals, anyone recently released from prisons or rehabilitation facilities, or under any legal supervision for such, or become a home to those who are subject to Megan's Law. Ensure that the hotel operates as one would expect a normal hotel, such as Best Western, so as to attract tourists and travelers, and not serve as long-term residents of any kind. Ensure that the government does not sublet or control who is housed in the hotel, and if the project is approved, ensure the owner and contractor keep the school district informed in advance of any machinery work that may close or block the streets around the building, so that school bus routing can be adjusted accordingly. In addition, the district is concerned about the increased use of water, since the drought situation has not yet been improved. The district continues to struggle to do our part to conserve, and this project will be an additional strain on the system, not only for more showers, but for industrial laundry and landscaping. Again, the district is against this action and respectfully asks that if it is approved after all, that our specific, that the specific conditions be applied to protect our children of Kalinka. Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, I am here as a citizen tonight, only a citizen. I have a little bit of information I need to kind of let you be aware of. I know about the building, I'm very familiar with both sides and who was there. Freeman Motsumoto, Ted Frame, and Russ Motsumoto had the building at one time, up until almost nine years ago, when they decided to move their office to Fresno. Just before that time, they had, the west side of the building, they had it converted over, they did a bunch of remodeling, and one of the rooms, they had to remove a wall. That wall, they had to have asbestos abatement come in, just to remove the walls, so they could make one room. So my suggestion is, when you get ready to get your plans on how they're gonna do the bathrooms at least, that each wall that that's gonna be taken down, it needs to be tested beforehand, because the entire building is full of asbestos in the walls. So, and I know they only went so far, and they were able to, to get by it when they actually sold it. As far as I could tell, everybody that was involved was notified. But that's another issue, just cost on, on them, because it's, if, if it's gonna be too much, it's probably something that might not be able to go through, especially at ten thousand dollars a wall. So, just an option. Other than that, the parking in the back, I know it's not really gonna be much of an issue, because the next door neighbor, the apartment complex that's there, they have parking in the back, and some of them are nurses and construction workers, and they're in and out twenty-four hours a day anyways, so it's, I don't think it's been much of an issue. I think it's gonna be more of the type of element that actually stays there, and of course, you know, we can't judge people, so, but I just want you to be aware that there is asbestos in the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else looking to?
Good evening, my name's Teresa Irwin, and I live on Washington Street, and I've lived there my entire life.
I'm Monica Sigler, I'm her daughter, and I live on the two hundred block of College.
Okay, I actually went around the neighborhood and the community, and took a, a paper around, and a lot of the people weren't even familiar with this happening, and I had not one person want this to happen. Our major concern, most of the people said right off the bat, were the children of the community, going to and from school daily, very big hazard, we have no idea who's gonna be there, and they're not our community members. So that was very worrisome to most, all of the people I spoke to, they had big concerns with that. We also had a lot of property concerns for the zoning, saying that when they bought their homes, there's, there was no zoning for motels and hotels, sure, there's been lawyers there, doctors, dentists, and they come and work, and they go home, they're not staying there. So we have no idea if that'll affect property value to our homes, and it is our community. So there's also the problem of the traffic congestion of the schools, there's the morning, lunch, and eat, you know, after school, there's a lot of traffic going on there, there's kids crossing, that will bring more traffic, it's not like someone coming to the doctor and leaving, you got people coming and going if they're staying at a hotel, a motel. Also, a lot of people were really concerned that they didn't have any information about this letter at all, they were like dumbfounded, nobody knew at all about this letter, and only, I don't know if it goes out just so many feet, I'm not sure how it works, but a lot of the community go, how come I, I live on this street, how come I didn't get it? I went on College Street, I went even outside of the area that I live in, and there wasn't one person that thought this was a good, a good idea. So, do you have anything to add, Nick?
I just was gonna say, I did grow up, obviously, in my mom's house, on the two hundred block of Washington Street. My husband and I, in two thousand fourteen, bought a home almost directly across the alley from her, on the two hundred block of College Street, and we bought it primarily for that location. We were close to the schools, we have a son that goes to school, I walked him to school, to Cheney every day, I walked right past that building. That would have terrified me, to be honest. I, I would not have liked the idea of not knowing who was there, I knew the people that lived in the area, and yes, things change, but it's also Kalinka, and we know what is around us, and we have this sense of safety, and it's not just around the schools, it's in the middle of the schools. I mean, Cheney's on one side of it, and you got your string of elementary schools on the other side, kids have to cross there, there's no other option. And that, that is really hard for me, I also work at the schools, I walk to school, I walk to work every single day. I just, I would hope that you guys will recognize and respect the people in this community, and the pride that they have in their homes and the area that they live in, and this is just something that, the area wasn't built for this. If, with all due respect, if the area was built for this, it would have been zoned for this a long time ago, and it's not. It's a residential area, we've had some businesses in there, they've been great businesses, a, a hotel is not the right business for that area.
So we'd like to thank you tonight for listening to us, and we hope that you will, as our community city leaders, listen to the community and take this into consideration for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Vincent Lopez, and I'm over here speaking on behalf of Mr. Rito Gutierrez. I don't think the hotel, to be honest, is a bad idea. I understand there's concerns for child safety. For instance, we do have a hotel on the corner, across the street from a daycare, Cambridge Inn, across the street from the college, there's also two more hotels and a motel there also, you know, kids walk back and forth there all the time. You know, kids walk up and down streets all the time, but they walk past houses, the kid doesn't know who lives in that house, you know? They can get snatched from the owner of that house, you know, they can get snatched from someone on the street, it's not specifically just coming from that hotel. I understand people are checking into the hotel, but they explained that it's gonna be from eight to eight, which traffic should be around that time, eight to eight. Now, if someone's checking into the hotel and they plan on leaving later on in the night, I don't think that's a big deal for one person or two people checking out, you know? Before you usually go to a hotel, don't you look it up on your phone to see when they're open, when they're closed? You know, you don't just pull up to a hotel and, and hope they're open or have a room open. Like he explained, there is an apartment complex next door that has all of their parking in the back of the alley. You know, they come in and out twenty-four hours a day, there's people that work day and night shifts, so, I mean, that alley is already being used twenty-four hours of the day. I don't see the point of building a wall to prevent people from backing into the alley when people do it already anyways. Those surrounding houses in that alley also have driveways in that alley, they back into the alley the same way. I think it could bring a few jobs to some people, you know, you got, she did mention also the, who was representing the school. I understand they don't want like criminals or people, you know, checking in, but at the same time, when you check into a hotel, do they ask you if you had criminal history? I don't think they do, because it's, you know, obviously it is a concern, but it's none of their business. So, I don't think the hotel is, to be honest, a bad idea, people check in and out all the time.
No, 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 no. Continue, continue.
Oh, all right, oh, no, that's, that's all I had to say, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. It does bring new jobs to some people, a janitor, a clerk, you know, someone leaf-blowing the outside, someone trimming the bushes, it does bring more income to the city, people checking in and out of that hotel. There is designated crosswalks, I don't think the hotel owner would have to hire someone to help kids cross, there are crosswalks that are lit up right there, you know, with the button, stuff like that. I don't think that should be a big concern. I understand that the school is down the street, like I mentioned, there are two, two, three more hotels also located near schooling areas, plus it's, I mean, the school that's close to it is, is grown kids, it's not like there's little two, three, four-year-olds walking right there, you know?
Where do you live?
Okay, okay, okay.
Good evening, my name's Teresa Fernandez, and I do live in the neighborhood where this building is located. Couple of points that were brought up regarding lawyers and dentists, they were there maybe from nine to five, but they also had people coming in for their business, it was unlike they were just sitting there. We don't know the people that went to, that had to hire an attorney, that had to go to the dentist, just like we don't know who would rent a room, so what's the difference? The other thing is, we do have a bed and breakfast right around the corner, even closer to the school than this one is. We don't know who rents there, but it's there, and it's been there for a long time. Couple of points. Again, I live there, I drive by there all the time. Kids walking to school, we're not seeing as many from that direction as we're seeing from the other one, and based on the congestion of traffic at school in the morning and the afternoon, tells you immediately that kids aren't really walking to school in this day and age, they're being driven to school. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donna Weber, I live on Washington Street, and I sit, I sit there and I see the kids passing every day as they go to school. We already know about the not water your yard, so that's gonna be coming up, but there is the walkway right there for the kids to walk, and so they're gonna be standing there for quite a while, as the people that are staying there will be standing out front. Has anybody driven by Cambridge Hotel and seen all of them standing outside, smoking their cigarettes and drinking? and drinking and their wash hanging all over the place? I know we've all seen this, yeah? Is, is this the future for Washington Street? I don't know. Will there be big, white buses out front too?
No.
No. He did say there wasn't.
That's, that, the white, that's connected with H2A programs.
With H, okay. That's, oh, that's a good thing. But I've lived on Washington Street for twenty years and I've seen the kids walking. They, they walk. I've seen them. And it's just sad that they're gonna be standing right there in front of this hotel waiting to cross the street. They will be standing right there. And it's, I, I, I hope you guys just don't, uh, okay this. It's not a very good place. Cambridge is way out there on the other end of town, you know? This is dead smack in the middle of us and our babies. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Go, go, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Roger Tiffin. Um, I live out at Poste Sine. But I wanna make a comparison. I used to live at four-two-four Roosevelt and had to park behind me. And I'm look, I'm listening to what I hear tonight and the apartment complex would be different than a hotel. Apartments, that's your neighbors. People move in there, they stay a long time. You get to know them, you get to know their name. A hotel's gonna have all kinds of people coming and going. And I, my, I just made reservations over at the coast. I won't get a place under two-hundred-and-fifty a night cuz I don't want the people standing around, making noise, drinking beer and throwing bottles. And that's what I saw on Roosevelt Street at the park. Cuz you've got, for lack of a better term, transient. Different people just coming and going. They don't live there. A real nuisance. You call the police, they come. Three hours later, the problem's back. So now, but I bought the house knowing it was there. So that's okay. You've got people that have bought their homes, got their life savings. Everything's going at a way they had planned and now you're gonna drop a hotel right in the middle of a residential area. I really think you have a responsibility to the citizens of Kalinga to consider the impact on their lives, their life savings and what they had planned and how you're gonna mitigate people coming and going that are not your neighbors. Not saying there's anything wrong with them, but it's a lot of different people. So I think you've got a, something to really consider. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Kyle Irwin. Teresa Irwin's son. Uh, grew up, um, in the two hundred block of Washington Street, uh, currently living in the two hundred block of Harvard Street. Lived and worked in this community my whole entire life. Love the community a hundred percent, um, for development and growth of this community. I like it, um, but this isn't the right spot. This isn't the right thing to do. The beauty of this country, like everybody said, behind us, um, you know, we can't decide on who comes and goes at this hotel. That's, that's the freedoms that people have in this, this, this world, right? That we have, the United States. But it's also the fear that, that we have, right? The loitering, the hanging around. It's a blessing and a curse, right? So when we look at that, the, the people that, that are gonna develop this hotel, they're not the ones that are gonna, gonna catch the, the fallout of what happens. The theft, the potential theft. I can't even say that it's gonna happen, but the potential theft, theft, right? The loitering, the, the impact it has on the roadways, the impact it has on the children going to school, the impact that it has on this community. It's gonna affect the people that are right here in front of you. Every day, that they live on that street. They build relationships with their neighbors. Uh, it's a well-established older ta, uh, older area of this community. People that live in that community, they know the people that live in that community and they respect one another. They respect each other's property. And, um, so that's, that's just the way I wanted to come up here and explain that is, you know, I, I get it. It's, uh, we can't control who comes and goes and I wanna see growth as well. But the people that live in that community and those, that section of the street shouldn't have to live with the fallout of what comes with that, right? If we wanna develop, we should develop somewhere that's, that's undeveloped. We have a lot of land around here. So, um, thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it and, uh, good luck with your decision.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Melinda Hagan. I live at two-oh-three College and I'd like to reiterate what the people have said here. I monitor, I was, I'm a retired school teacher and I monitor the children that flow. We aren't going to be able to control who those people are that are staying there. And there are laws that, uh, children, predators of children can't live within so many feet of a school. How close are we to the kindergarten? That's the most important one. I think our teenagers are probably wise enough to be able to take care of themselves, but I still think they're vulnerable. The restaurant that's very close there is the only place that the people from that motel are going to be able to eat. And who are they going to eat but drive by there at lunchtime and look at all the children? Do any of you have a child that's in high school or a grandchild that's in high school? Would you want her there intermingling with a strange man that just breezed through our town? I have that, that's my main question. I'm concerned about the children and I'm also concerned about the seniors. The people that live in our neighborhood are sixty-five and older. I'm eighty years old. Do you think I could protect myself if someone from that motel decided he was going to mosey a half, one, one house away and decide he was going to break into it? Would you like to have it in your neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ulysses Hradto. I'm a resident on the three-hundred block of Washington Street. I wanna be clear that I'm not opposed to the development of the property into a hotel. I'm more opposed to the adverse effects of this development on the neighborhood, right? So a variance would have to be granted to not require a wall along the alley. If that variance was not granted, would the parking still account for seventeen rooms or would they have to park on the street? I get a lot of traffic on Washington and Fresno Street from the apartments that turn in and park on the alley. I don't know if the city's general plan has a requirement on the amount of traffic that, if traffic flow is, uh, something that's allowed through an alley. I mean, I, I know it's a right-of-way for anybody, but can it be included in, uh, in granting a mixed-use permit that you're assuming the alley is now gonna be a right-of-way for that type of development, right? So that's one concern of mine. Uh, I lived on that house for twelve years and I personally, with my own eyes, have seen multiple kids almost get killed by cars driving down the street. And I understand you can't control who's gonna stay in the hotel the same way that, uh, we don't know who's eating at McDonald's every morning and that's not really my concern. My concern is the increase in traffic. The increase in, like, there's not gonna be any, there already isn't parking cuz the ho, the apartment residents park on the street because the parking in the back overflows and now we're gonna introduce an easement for them to enter the hotel from the alley. That's, the majority of the parking at this seventeen-room development is along the southeast side of the building. And so the majority of the people are gonna be entering through the alley. If you don't grant the variance to exclude the block wall, then, uh, they're gonna be entering where the majority of traffic is going to school. And so part of the planning commission's job is to determine adverse effects on the general public and the neighborhood. And if we haven't put twenty cars in the neighborhood and, and studied the effects on that, I mean, how, how have we proven that it has not adversely affected us? So, I hope you take those things into consideration when you, you know, you make your decision. And I'm, I'm assuming that the original planning commission who approved the mixed-use didn't intend on, uh, twenty-three people coming in and out of that thing every day. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Tim Smith. I'm in the, uh, one-hundred block of Adams. Um, I live there, across from Cheney, uh, kindergarten. And absolutely, there's traffic with kids walking. I get in the First Southern Baptist Church. Um, if we're, if we're talking about kids walking through there, uh, we have kids that go through that area, which, which is fine. But it was said that there wasn't, there wasn't the kids walking back and forth. I know that there's older brothers and sisters taking probably their kids or their brothers and sisters to the Chan, to the Cheney kindergarten. So, yes, there's small kids that are still walking through there. The gentleman said that, I think he mentioned something about the fact that, um, you don't know who's there and that, that leads more to the point, to the fact that you don't know who, who potentially every house is, you're right. But you're just adding to the fact of who you don't know is coming transient. So, it's not, in my opinion, good for the neighborhood with the schools. Um, I have two daughters myself. They play in the neighborhood. Now, that's just another area where I gotta say, hey, keep your eye out. You never know who's coming in and out of this place. So, and then another thing that was, uh, mentioned, he mentioned about, uh, Cambridge, uh, over by the preschool. Thank you for bringing up Cambridge cuz the, the idea that, I, I'm sure their intentions are well to create a nice place. But in time, if that's, if they sell it, it changes hands. Look what has happened to Cambridge. It's almost an eyesore these days, along with many of the other motels, hotels here in town. They're, seedy is the word we, we would use about most of them. We don't need the possibility of that happening in this neighborhood, a well-established neighborhood, like all my other neighbors have said. So, that's all I have to say about it. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donna Sherrick. I live right straight across the street. When I look out my window, I see the building. I am very much against the change in the codes that we agreed to when we purchased our home to be changed now in order to help these people that wanna start a business across the street. I do not want a hotel. I don't want seventeen different individuals coming and going and changing and cars. I do not want a variance. I don't want a non, a conditional use permit. I don't want these to be granted.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add one more point that was brought up as far as the need. I'm a real estate broker here in town and we hear it all the time of people buying houses just to rent them by the rooms. So they're in all the neighborhoods. They're in Fox Hollow, Stallion Springs.
Teresa, I'm sorry, can you speak more into the microphone? Thank you.
Again, they're in Fox Hollow, they're in Stallion Springs, they're in Poste Sine. These houses are everywhere. The people are buying to rent by the room. Why? Because there's a need for it. There's a need for it for people working at the state prison, at the state hospital. Right now, I'm getting calls cuz, uh, prison just closed. So we're getting people coming in. The need is there for something for, whether nurses, teachers, doctors. And you see it with, again, Baker House. It's there. It's rented. You know, and if it's a house in a neighborhood that also has people coming in because they're renting by the room, whether in this neighborhood, that neighborhood, it's happening. Just a point.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Ulysses Hradto. The target market is teachers, nurses, uh, from what Mr. Gutierrez said, teachers, nurses, employees that travel. I don't know of any teacher or nurse that only works for thirty days and then never comes back. So, in the, is, would there be a condition in the conditional use permit to require like a certain amount of time before you can recheck back in? I mean, uh, as opposed to it being used as a short-term rental? There, there is a housing crisis and there is a lot of people that don't have somewhere to live and they're renting garages and apartments and things like that. But that's a different type of renter. That's a long-term renter, someone that is coming and working from out of town, not someone who is just coming for the night. And another, I don't know if the commission is able to or someone is able to grant a condition of developing that property and changing the zoning, conducting a traffic survey on Washington Street to see, um, you know, maybe we need road undulations. If we do need road undulations and it's gonna increase the response time of first responders to someone that needs emergency services and that would also be an adverse effect to the neighborhood. So, I hope you consider all these things when you take, take all these things into consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing to, um, Monica Sigler. Um, just mentioning the real estate. Um, you can go on any real estate site and one of the first things you see at the bottom is how close in proximity they are to a school. Why is that? Because people want to live close to a school. They have children. School areas are safe. There are laws that protect children when they are at school. People wanna live. We bought our home in that area because I knew I would work for a school district. I knew that we would have children that would go to that school. And there are laws in effect that prevent certain people from living in that area. And the reason for that is because those people should not be around children. Just like the gentleman said, when someone checks into a hotel, none of that is known. They can't ask them about their criminal history. They don't ask them if they're on Megan's Law. None of that is done. So those people now can't live in the area, but they can come stay in the hotel. And now there's kids crossing the street, kids going to school every day. Brothers and sisters, like Tim said, walking their four-year-old child, four-year-old brother across the street to Cheney and then walking back by themselves so that they can get over to their fifth-grade classroom. The laws are in place for a reason and it is to keep particular people out of a certain area. Now, am I saying those people would stay there? No, we don't know that, right? But we are giving that chance. And that is where I feel like we are making the wrong decision in allowing this to come into that area.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, I think all this conversation is ma, is leading to a misunderstanding what a hotel means. A hotel is a place to stay and sleep and go back to work. Hotel is not to, for criminals to sleep. Is there a, on your records, do you have a person living in a hotel that killed a kid going to school? Can you show me one record on Kalinga history? If anybody can show me that, I can believe you. Like the teacher and the gentleman. This conversation is leading to misunderstanding why, why we are here for. We're here to bring a building, it's been abandoned. Uh, we have, uh, homeless living there. The building is about to get burned, like many other buildings that are sitting there by itself. We're bringing, uh, work for, uh, employees for the, working at the hotel. We, we're bringing this building alive to make Kalinga beautiful again, since this building is sitting there for years. This is not, hotel is not to bring criminals. Hotel is, uh, like I told you guys, if anybody can show me that people living in a hotel kills kids and kills neighbors, then I believe you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I do wanna go ahead and say is how much, um, surprises me, how much faith you guys have in your community? Because the people that are actually gonna be staying in our hotel aren't gonna be people running from the law, criminals, you know, that are trying to go ahead and do all these horrible things to us. They're gonna be your friends. They're gonna be your family members. They don't have a place to stay because something happened. That's why we wanna go ahead and bring this to the community. It's not something that's going to be scary for our kids. I mean, they already have things like that going on in the community and I would say that they do a fairly well job on staying away from that. Um, but if you guys don't agree, then let me know. And that's not gonna be my problem. That's gonna be the person racing them. So I think that our community- So I think that our community is very, very well, you know? We have a lot of churches, we have good schools, we have good programs, and we want to go ahead and add to that. We want to go ahead and add a service, you know? Add something essential to these people that are coming in to work. Like I said, they're going to go ahead and stay here three, five days to go ahead and work, and then they're going to go home. It's not going to be something where they're going to be staying for more than 30 days. And like, I would like to reiterate, these signs are mostly already in place right in front of the hotel. We literally have a crosswalk that we have to go ahead and press, and it lights up in the dark, okay? It's not something that we're going to also additionally have to go ahead and add and implement. But like Vincent did say, we do have an apartment complex very, very close to that ho, to soon-to-be hotel, and it's being used all day, 24 hours. If they want to go ahead and conduct the traffic survey to go ahead and determine if it will go ahead and qualify for the flow of traffic that it's going to be getting, then let's go ahead and do it, just so we could prove to everybody that it's in an ambient place to go ahead and be placed. Because like I said, and I like to reiterate, it's not going to be criminals that are running from the law going to be renting out our rooms. It's going to be your friends and your family. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, one more thing again, I'm sorry. I got one more thing to add. So we've hit, the, the subject is kind of going around. Couple people have come up and said different things now. But if we go back and look at some state politics a little bit back, when Gavin Newsom decided he was going to COVID hit, and they start releasing people from state penitentiaries or state prisons, right? Those individuals didn't have anywhere to stay. And where did they put those people? They put them in hotels. Those hotels, they offered money. The state of California put money up to put people in hotels. Those, those people that are getting released on parole are going to hotels. So what is going to be in place to prevent that from happening when the state of California comes knocking on the door and says, I have a $12,000 check for you to house people for 30-plus days? I'm sorry, but when that, when that happens, and business may be running slow at that time, people don't refuse that, right? The business has to stay alive. So it's, when people come up here and say that, oh, it's not going to be housed with those, there, there might be times that it's not, but there is a potential that it could be, right? And I, I live, I live five blocks from where this development is going to be at. So I would hope within that five blocks, it wouldn't affect me, but I have loved ones that live very, very, very close, and I grew up very, very close to that building, within six houses. So when we go back and look at state politics, and you can find it, you can look it up online, you will find that that is exactly what they did. The city of Lemoore, they went through the same thing. It will increase your public safety. It will increase the responses that are going to be in that area. So it's there. You can look at it. I think Internet access is pretty, pretty open nowadays, and you guys can find that. That is what he did. And that's how they managed making sure those release, releases happened. So again, as a lot of other individuals, I hope you guys take that into consideration because if there's nothing in place to stop that, at that point, it's a business and you have no control over it, right? They're going to do what's good for the business. So thank, again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I wasn't going to mention this, but I feel it's very relevant. Yesterday, my daughter came from Fresno. She lives in the north of Fresno, which you know is fairly nice. And she said that a company, and I'm sorry, but she recognized the name of the gentleman, had put, had refurbished a building three blocks from where she lives. People are coming over the fence. She has a pit bull, and they are still trying to come over the fence at her yard. They've tried to break into her car twice. And I am very concerned that we are going to have, I just don't, I am familiar with the teachers in this town, and they do not come and stay in a motel. They have friends and relatives that they stay with. They don't stay in motels. I don't think their clientele is going to be your sweet little schoolteacher or a nice little nurse. I have also problems with ladies that live in my neighborhood that are single ladies that work in the, the mental hospital and the prisons. They work rotating shifts. They come home at odd hours at two and three and four o'clock in the morning. And how would you like to be a woman to get out of your car in an unsafe neighborhood or a questionable, questionable neighborhood and to make it to your house where you have a, maybe a small, yappy little dog? Do we all have to invest in pit bulls? That's my question.
Thank you. Do you want to share? Excuse me. I, I, we've allowed a lot of people to get up here second. We're not going to allow people to get up for a third time. It's...
I just need to turn, I forgot to turn the same one up there. This is, I went around the neighborhood and got signatures, and there's a letter in there for my neighbors. I need to give you that last time.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Michelle Helmar, and I am not speaking as a planning commissioner. I am speaking as a person who moved to Colinga 18 years ago. I came down to work at the state prison in Avonale. My intention was to stay at a few hotels in Lemoore, Hanford, Colinga, and decide where I was going to move. First place I found was the Baker House here in Colinga, and I never left. So I'm one of those people who needed a place to stay temporarily until I could buy my house. I think I'm the kind of person that is the client that they're looking for in their hotel. So I think, I just want to share my experience. I think I am that person that will be, would be staying at the hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone who has not spoken yet that has any comment? Okay, with that said, we are going to close the public hearing at this time. If there, does the commission have any further discussion for the applicant for staff, Commissioner Stop and Brink?
Yeah. Sean, with respect to process, notifications were, because I heard some concerns that a lot of people were not aware of this, and was only sent out to 300 people within 300 feet. But that's only like four or five houses, I would think.
No. It went to...
That doesn't seem like a lot of distance, and especially, that's a very highly populated residential area. So I'm just wondering with respect to notifications, if 300 feet would have been adequate.
There was, there was 45, it's 10 days prior to the public hearing, there was...
You didn't get it till seven days before the hearing. Seven days.
Has to be mailed out 10 days prior.
Well, you might have mailed it, but you know.
Yeah. That's, that's, our code requires 10-day public hearing notices. It went to 45 different residents, owners, because it goes to the owners on record.
Forty-five?
There was 45 total notices mailed out.
I went on entire Washington Street and almost all the colleges. I had so many people coming in, I never even saw the letter again.
Well, I haven't received any return mail, and I can assure you all the mailers went out. Yeah.
You'll get them in a couple of days because by the time they get them and they mail them, by the time you got them and mailed us, we'll be in a couple of days.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Helmer.
A question. Sean, do you know anything about home, the homeless taking over?
I, I'm not too sure. I know that during COVID, cities had to participate in the programs to permit the hotels to actually be converted for...
No, I'm talking about in, people sneaking, homeless people sneaking in and, and, you know, setting up shop in...
I'm, I'm not aware of it. I think that would be something the police department would be aware of. I'm not, I'm not aware of it. I don't know.
We're going to have security in the hotel day and night.
No, no, I'm, I'm questioning, you mentioned that homeless people were coming in there now. And I wonder...
Okay, okay, okay. Let's, let's, let's... Okay, okay. Let's, let's all calm down. Is there anyone else that, do you, does anybody have any other comment or question? By Chair Jacobs.
Just curious, how long have you owned this property? Four years? It was the intentions of buying this motel the whole time, or what was the reason for, may I ask?
Whoever wants to answer will need to come up to the microphone, please.
So I'm just going to be translating back and forth. His English is not that... He's the owner of the property. And we're trying to make the best of this project, and any concerns that you guys have, please let us know. We will try to address them as fast as we can. I also live here in Colinga. And here are his children. I'm pretty sure we could go ahead and make something out of this building, this project that's going to make you feel better than an empty building. Do you guys want an empty city? You want a beautiful city, don't you?
Okay, okay, okay. You, you need to address us. We're the ones making the decision.
Sorry.
That's just... Okay, the question was, you've owned this building for four years. When you purchased it, you've been holding it this whole time with the intent of doing what with this building?
First, we tried to go ahead and make it a school. But that wasn't achieved. The, you know, project fell apart. The reason that it fell apart was because of COVID, and if you guys knew the directors, something also happened. And the head director actually went ahead and died, passed away. So that is the reason why we actually didn't follow through with the school. At the moment, our new project is to go ahead and make this into a hotel, to go ahead and give the opportunity to 17 people to have a warm place to stay. A lot of you guys know I have a lot of properties here in Colinga, and you have no idea how many calls I get every single day to see if I have homes for it. Very big necessity. Something economical that we could go ahead and bring to them.
Yeah, just, I'd like to say too, I, I know there's a huge need for rentals in this town. But the, the issue is, is this the place for them? It's not that we don't think there's a need.
I believe it is because the city actually zoned it accordingly for us to actually make this project there. Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Thank you so much for your time. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, if there's no need for any further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'm going to motion to deny the request due to the negative impact on the residents and the properties.
Commissioner Pruitt made the motion to deny this conditional permit. Does the motion have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stop and Brink made the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stop and Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Helmar?
No.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
Aye. I vote aye as well. You do have, you do have an appeal process to the city of Colinga. I'm sure Mr. Brewer will fill you in on that after the meeting. Moving right along to department reports.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Commissioner announcements. With that, meeting adjourned.